Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. It is 5:30, two, three, whatever it is. And the first item on our workshop agenda is a presentation from Lois Love about budget revisions. But before I turn the floor over to Lois, I want to take just a few minutes to say a public thank you to ESG that handles our Public Works. They have cleaned up a blighted area on South Central. Mr. Perrell was involved in that, and they've done a wonderful job as always, so we just want to make sure that they know that the work they did is very much appreciated. Johnny, did you want to add anything today?
I'd like to thank them. Personally, I think they did a tremendous job over there. They took out some leaky areas that needed to be taken out, and they did.
They did a good job.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you for that. Lois, we'll turn it over to you for the 2016 budget revisions.
Thank you, ma'am.
You'd like your bits of the same here?
As you know...
I don't think that's on. I don't think it's on.
Okay.
Turn it up.
It's on.
If it's on, it's not trying to go up.
Sorry, I can't talk loud.
I know.
As you're aware of, we approved a preliminary budget revision for general fund on March the 7th. The approval included the market adjustments for public safety, police, and fire personnel from various increases, decreases, and reallocations of revenues and expenditures. I've summarized those because we have included those in this overall budget revision that is being presented to you today. The major revenue changes increased totaling $344,000 based on actual revenues collected year-to-date and projections based on the current year trend.
What page are you on, Lois?
I'm on page one.
Yes.
Overview. I'm just going, the overview.
Oh, okay. I found it. I'm sorry. Okay. I didn't see that. Thank you.
In addition, you know, we increased the fire protection revenues based on the intergovernmental agreement. Other revenue changes decreased totaling $395,000, and that was based on numerous changes, one being the state's 5% reduction in motor vehicle afterlorm and the TAVIT tatts. And of course, the current trend in lost taxes that's been received and many other miscellaneous fees that we looked at and reviewed and adjusted accordingly. Major expenditures were reduced and reallocated due to the funding changes and delay in purchase of capital projects. And all of the above was a net reduction of $51,000. As I said, these adjustments have been incorporated in the final 16 budget revision booklet that you have. The total general fund adjustments reflected in this book is a decrease of $75,000. There wasn't that much bottom line change in what had been approved previously. There were many changes back and forth within the departments, between the departments and funds within the funds, and they will be detailed in your book if you want to look at the line items. They are all there, small, medium, and large. And in general fund, you will see a positive amount, and that's because we have to budget for our $250,000 book entry that we made once a year for prepaid broadband on amateur station, and so we budget for that since it's general fund and the auditor's like for general fund to be in balance. Other major adjustments were, that included in your booklet is the market adjustments for other personnel, which is included in the appropriate fund. Increased water sales based on the current revenue trend. We increased cost of gas sales and added several capital projects within the gas fund, creating a transfer from the fund balance reserve, and you will see that fund balance reserve. We increased hotel motel tax based on current revenue trends, and there were many other increases and decreases were made to establish the proper level of funding to cover the remaining operating and capital activities. Capital projects were also added to the individual funds in the appropriate category based on available revenues. Other projects were removed as completed or reallocated to the future years of the five-year plan based on the status of each project. If you, just to tell you a little bit about how the book is laid out, the first tab talks about governmental funds. You have your general fund, your SPOS funds, your capital project funds. Your next section is your enterprise funds, which is your water sewer, gas, SWCD, Tilt Theater, and of course, the sewer sinking fund. And then you have your special revenues, and within special revenues, you have your hotel motel, special revenue fund, confiscated fund, grants, and then service fund. And then you go into the capital project section, which gives you a summary of all the capital projects, the funding, and each individual capital project, and how it's funded and how it is anticipated to be spent. So if you have any questions at all in more detail, you know, just let me know, and we'll be more than happy to go over it with you. What we are asking you to do is approve the recommended budget revision for fiscal year 2016 as submitted. Are there any discussion?
Any questions? Any comments? What is that?
Good.
Yay. Thank you, Lois. Good job. You also have the next item on our agenda, which is the discussion of renewal of the contract with Malden and Jenkins. So I'll just go ahead and start on that.
I will say, if you see any of my staff, just tell them thank you because they worked very hard on pulling this book together today.
They always do a good job. Proud of them.
Thank you. Okay. We are asking you to approve the audit services with Malden and Jenkins for fiscal year 16. This is based on a resolution that was approved last year, number 24, allowing for automatic renewal of their services. And this was in agreement and a requirement of OCGA 361613, I believe that Mr. Willmont had reviewed last year and allowed us to do this. So basically, our proposed action is to approval to automatically renew their contract for another year FY16. I have to say, they have worked with us very well over the past four years and have been, you know, spent an enormous time, you know, with us, looking at the audit and looking at different regulations and pronouncements, GASP pronouncements that are required that we have implemented and been available to answer questions whenever we require that. So I can say they have helped us tremendously, and they are a very capable firm. They handle, I believe, over 185 governments in the southeast, and their specialty is in governmental accounting, so with municipalities and counties. So we are asking you to approve that automatic renewal clause that was in the resolution approved last year. And I believe in that resolution, they ask us to give a 60-day notice where we would have plenty of time to implement the agreement prior to that. I did give you a engagement letter that is basically their contract. It's, I just received it, so we are asking that upon approval of this, you give the city manager the responsibility of finalizing that agreement.
Okay. I think we've been very pleased with their service. Like you said, they do specialize in governmental auditing, so they've done a very good job for us.
I'd like to give Lois an opportunity to drag it a little bit on the office, but more than that, to drag her staff. If you don't mind, go back to 2012 and tell somebody, find your server, and where we've come from that point forward.
Okay. Well, in 2012, when I got here, we had 13 findings that first year. We did not complete the audit by 1231. It was up in, I think, March before we were able to complete the audit and for 2012. And of course, by then, we were halfway into the next fiscal year, and we had to basically go back a full year. The staff and I went back a full year and reconciled just about the entire fiscal year for '12. So once that was audited, we immediately started on '13 and went forward. We were able to get that audit completed and submitted prior to 1231, and that is the due date. And several other compliance issues that were required, the local government report, which is a long, four or five-page report that's required at the end of the year, and the Department of Transportation report that is due. Also, our SWCD compliance was due, and we had to ask for an extension on that as well. So there were several extensions made that year and several, like 13 findings. In '13, we reduced those findings to six, which we were proud of.
We should be.
And staff was proud of that, too. And then last, year before last, we had three findings, and this year, we had one. So the three findings last year, two of them were completed before they finished, but they were left in the audit report. And then this year, the one finding that we have been working on, we are determined, determined to have that taken off soon. We are working with Harris, our U.B. utility firm, and we think we have a solution, but we're not, I don't want to get overconfident yet, but we're hoping we'll have a solution to that soon.
Very good.
Just recently hired a new person. Her name is Pam Barrett. I just hadn't talked around in any of these because we've been busy on other things, but very proud to have her, and I think she's going to join our team, and we all work together. It takes all of us to get it done, so just...
Couldn't do it without staff and all of your support. Well, I know it's a big job to manage the finances of this city, and so many people, I think, on the outside look and say, "Well, that's just bookkeeping," but it's not. It's a whole different level of accounting, so we appreciate what you do and what the staff does, and I know you had your work cut out for you when you started. I remember that, and it was not fun, I know. Driving by the old city hall at 10 o'clock at night, and the upstairs lights would all be on, and dominoes would be pulling in the driveway, and it was a lot of work, but thank you. You got us where we are today, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you for all of your support.
Thank you, Ms. Lois.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Go ahead. Sorry.
Question, just trying to understand this, automatically renewed. So if it automatically renews, why are we...
Automatically renews subject to the approval of council.
We have to give a notice period prior to expiring, and I believe that's a part of the state law. I mean, you can have an automatic renewal, but it's got to comply with certain conditions of the state law as far as the statute, because generally, contracts can only be good for one year. But if you have the magic language in the agreement that provides for notice for cancellation, then you can have a contract beyond one year.
We can't. Basically, we, each council can't encumber the next year's council with debt.
Local governments can only contract one year at a time.
Okay. I guess that's what the automatic renew kind of, I don't want, you know...
But we don't have to go back and renegotiate the contract. We don't have to bill the services. We don't have to redo all of that. It's...
You work on the language.
You don't have to reapprove this much paper.
Yeah.
And the process.
Got it. Right. That works. It didn't go down? Didn't go down?
So you want to ask, have any other questions of Lois or the process or anything? Everybody good? Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the discussion of ordinance providing for additional six-month extension on crematories. Mr. Willmont.
I think we kind of addressed this at the retreat, and we were trying to come up with some ideas as far as where crematories should be permitted and not be permitted, and I think that from what I heard from council is that we want to take a little bit further look into this, to see what the options are. So this basically extends another six months to give council an opportunity to look into the issue a bit closer and try to come up with some options.
Okay. Very good. Anyone have any questions regarding that extension? Okay. Rob, you also have the next item on a Scrivener's error.
Is that...
That's item number five, consider ordinance correcting Scrivener's error in ordinance 2014-23.
Number four.
We have number four also.
Oh, I skipped that. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I just looked right over that, and I have my glasses on. But you also have that one, the discussion of the ordinance amending Chapter Six, Article Two, age requirement for entering a bar and other matters.
Last year's legislature, not this year's legislature passed legislation that basically prohibits anyone under the age of 21 from entering a bar. And previously, we had an entertainment establishment in our ordinance that basically permitted people under the age of 21 but over 18 to enter into what we define as an entertainment establishment with the provisions that they get armbands and what have you to make sure they didn't get any alcohol. Based upon the new state law, you know, a bar is defined as any establishment that derives more than 75% of their gross income from the sale of alcohol. And so with the new state law that says no one under the age of 21 can enter into a bar, then that basically, we cannot have a provision in our ordinance that allows people under 21 to enter into an entertainment establishment. So basically, what this ordinance does is require that no one under the age of 21 may enter a bar, and basically, that does away with our provision related to entertainment establishments because they are now defunct, so to speak. One thing I did want to look at was, which may need a little bit of tweaking, this takes effect July 1, 2016, and the definition of a bar under state law is a little bit different than the definition that we have in our ordinance. It's also a little bit different, you know, we define a restaurant as someone that supplies at least 50% of their income from food. So I might want to look at that just a little bit closer, see if we need to redefine the definition of a bar. I think it may be a good idea to maybe have that, our definition comply with the state law as far as what's from the bar and who can go in a bar and who can't.
If we can bear that language, that makes it a lot easier on us to...
Right. So it'd be, you know, so anyway, this is a result of new state legislation that prohibits anyone under 21 going to a bar. So that's why we have to change this ordinance.
Unless they have, they do.
Right. That's true. There are some exceptions you can see in the ordinance. You know, of course, if they're accompanied by, you know, their parents or spouses over 21, there's other exceptions, like if you're going into, I think it's a theater show.
Yeah, and if, say, if the gin wants to have a venue where they charge to come in or charge them to hear someone come in and play, then at that time, that's a special venue. I believe that that can go in at that time.
Because I know that was, we wanted to be able to accommodate that before, so I'm glad you mentioned that.
That's what it sounds like to me, if I'm not mistaken.
You know, I think what it says is that, you know, you can, if you're going to a dinner theater or to an individual while he or she is attending a live musical concert or a live presentation of the performing arts, which he or she has paid an admission charge. And that's also, that's state law and which we put in the ordinance, so...
So then it goes from a bar to a venue.
Right. So I mean, I don't really know how you define those particular venues, whether it's a musical concert or presentation of performing arts, it's yet been defined any further, but I guess the bottom line is that we had to make this change to comply with the state law as far as underage people going into a bar.
Are the wristbands, will they still be required for going into those venues? They won't be required anymore?
Because what they'll do is just check your ID going in. If you're over 21, you get in. If you're not, then you don't.
But what if you have a special event, a new record, something?
Well, that's a good question, right?
Yeah.
We can include that.
We certainly can.
It doesn't have to...
Because I can see, you know, some of the places in town that are, you know, pretty much bars that may have a special event of a concert or something open, but do we still need to require wristbands for that?
Well, actually, the wristband was included in the entertainment establishment, so what I can do is take this and maybe put something there as far as wristbands, you know, in the event, someone under 21 maybe going in, and also take another look at the bar definition. We've got some time to tweak this, so it's, like I said, it's not to July 1 of this extension.
We can do it. Any other questions regarding that entertainment license? You good, Johnny?
I think it's unfortunate, but...
Oh, well. All right. Now, we will talk about the error. Mr. Willmont.
Back, I believe it was sometime, it was last, a couple of years ago, we revised, if you back and recall, we took a lot of sections from the environment code, we kind of squished it around, we kind of put them in the right place they were supposed to be. In drafting the ordinance, as I was putting stuff from one place to the other, I started numbering it wrong, and when it went up to MUNI code, actually, they caught it, and they went ahead and renumbered it correctly. So it's correct on MUNI code, but this basically just has the correct numbers on it, so it conforms with, you know, what the actual ordinance should be. So this is nothing, what we call a Scrivener's error, and just to correct that so our revenue is correct. But I say, MUNI code has got it, you know, got it correct.
Okay. Any questions regarding that correction? Item number six is discussion of the resolution amending Resolution 2015-82, providing for enterprise and application for Tipton Magnolia Properties, 103 South Tipton Avenue.
Yes, you may recall that a few months ago, we approved the enterprise on application, which is actually about incentives for developers to redevelop downtown and get rid of the slum and blight and all that kind of stuff. When we redid the, when we did the enterprise on application for this particular property, we did not allow, we didn't, we neglected to approve the waiver of the permit fees in the application. And obviously, this is a cheap plus me about a project, 34 apartments downtown, a restaurant, that's what's scheduled there, and what we're asking council to do is amend that enterprise on application and resolution to allow for those, to waive those permit fees for that property.
Okay. Any questions regarding that? Do you all remember that? That's the depot renovation, not depot, but the warehouse where the apartments and the restaurant are going in on Tipton.
At the other, the Thorpebacker warehouse.
Yes, exactly.
We generally waive the fees in projects like this.
Yes, and on this particular developer, he has redeveloped three or four properties downtown that I can recall off the top of my head, and we've always allowed the, all of the assumptions of repelling under the enterprise on application previously.
This was enterprise and opportunity zones were established many years ago for downtown development and the periphery of downtown, so one is related to jobs creation, one's related to renovation and building, and so it's a tip, this is a typical waiving. They're certainly entitled to that within that application. Also, we might want to make note that this developer recently won an award for his renovation of the Union Depot, which is right across the way over here, won a state award, and he traveled to Athens to receive that, so we're very proud of that. Tipton received recognition and...
And he brought back a check for $500.
Did he donate that to the city?
No, that was actually, it was the development.
I'm teasing. Okay. Gotcha.
He's probably had eight enterprise applications in the last two years.
Yeah. It's a really good, the enterprise opportunity zone, all of the tools in the toolbox, they, my experience has been that they can sometimes make a project a viable, financially feasible project versus it not being, and some of the, some of the projects that have been completed in the downtown area have just been wonderful. They certainly have increased the tax base and improved the area, so it's a, it's a great incentive to have, and when people make advantage of it, it works.
Can you start talking about historic preservation tax credits and things of that nature, which there were two projects I can think of off the top of my head that fell into that category. This is the third one. And the first one that we did with Roberts...
George.
That project could not have been done had it not been for tax credits.
That's exactly right.
And the enterprise and opportunity zone, and so it's good model.
Yeah. We want to encourage these type of projects downtown.
Absolutely. It's a great thing, and it certainly benefits from a tax-based standpoint, so those incentives are very important, and people certainly, and to apply for the incentives, you go through LaCrecia's office, is that correct? Or Rana, come to Rana? Okay. So it's a good program. Any questions, any other questions regarding that amendment for that? Item number seven is the discussion of a resolution providing for new alcoholic beverage license for Jay's Food Mart located at 1405 US Highway 41 North. Rana Martin.
Yes, Jay's Food Mart is under new ownership. Monica Branch is the new owner. We've done a background check on this branch, and everything has come back with no violations at all. Staff is recommending approval of that alcohol license.
You want to go ahead and do the next one?
The next one is for Tipton Kiosks Taking Sushi. They are also under new ownership. We've run a background check on the owner and manager, and also revealed no violations, since staff also recommends approval of that one.
Okay. Any questions regarding those applications? All right. The next item on our agenda is board report. Well, I can't talk. Board report. Rana, that's also you.
All right. This is one that I should have brought to you last month, and just slipped me. The tree board has two expirations on it, and the housing authority has one expiration on it. I have contacted Mr. LaForest and Ms. Rickett. They both would like to continue to serve. I have checked with Shandra Clark about Mark Van Brakel, and she is also requesting that he continue to serve.
Wonderful.
I did receive today on another board resignation from Mark Sam Middleton from Historic Preservation Commission.
That was sad to hear.
She's just hired.
Ten years, that's a long time.
She did say she'd like to take a year sabbatical and then reconsider serving in some other capacity, so...
Who is it? Mark Sam Middleton. She's, I think, currently the chairperson, is she not?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
She's the chair.
Yeah, and she's served on Historic Preservation Commission for many years. She's been a wonderful member, so we need to get busy and find someone to, or encourage someone to apply to take her spot, so that's an important board.
I'll look at my, I don't think I've got anything in the folder for HPC, but I'll double-check again. I worked over it today.
We might want to, it may have been a while since we've done this, we might want to send a letter out to those people who have gone through our CHAPS program. They, you know, they are very familiar with the city boards and, you know, different things, so that might be an option to see, and of course, we can certainly spread the word and put something on the website, Facebook, and all of our media outlets, so...
I thought I saw some really prime candidates in the leadership of Tipton.
There's some great candidates in leadership of Tipton. That's a good point.
So if you all know anyone that you think might be interested, let us know. If you all can approach them, let us know.
And for Historic Preservation Commission, they don't have to live in the historic district. They just have to be a resident of the City of Tipton, is that correct?
They have to have a very strong interest in Historic Preservation.
Right. Exactly. Okay. All right. Any questions regarding our board report or comments, suggestions? All right. Thank you, Rana. Mr. Rainer, you have item number 10, discussion of annexations.
My favorite subject, increase tax base. Oftentimes, people come...
Oftentimes, people come, I should have said, sometimes people come to the city manager's office to discuss the opportunity to annex property into the city of Tipton, and sometimes they're saying on a very short timeline. So what I would like to ask council to consider is the giving the city manager authority to provide and discuss incentives to offer people that want to annex their property to the city, similar to the enterprise in that case. You know, we have done incentives for the landfill and permanent fees and things of that nature, so I bring that for you tonight to see if that's something that you would like to do. If I have one candidate right now that's kind of waiting on your decision, we can, they can annex a property, obviously, but they're on a short timeline, and they'd like to expedite the process if at all possible. So if that's something that I would consider, we'll vote a resolution to that authorize the city manager to make those negotiations and to annex property into the city.
So, I mean, because what, they're waiting to see what we'll give them? Is that, I mean...
And what you can...
Well, I mean, what's the problem? What needs to be expedited, I guess? What's the...
Well, to expedite?
What's happens, yeah, I don't, I guess I don't understand the process today and what you're going to do that's going to expedite the process.
Well, there, this particular candidate has, does not want to deal with the other government that's involved, and they like to just deal with us, but they want to move forward with it, but rather than wait for formal action by council and going through the other process that we have to go through, they'd like for us to go ahead and say, "Yeah, we can do this, this, and this," and annex your property. Then they can put in their application for annexation, knowing what they may or may not be able to get as an incentive to annex.
Let me ask you this. With regarding annexation, that, that falls also under the category of planning and zoning, does it not?
They have, they have a process.
All right. Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Is there any way we could talk further about this during our planning and zoning training session?
Sure.
Okay. I think that would be beneficial.
Okay. There's no action, there's no action required on this tonight, it's just something for you to think about.
Sure.
And if it's something that council decides they won't do, then go with the resolution or whatever we talked was necessary.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's talk about that when we have the training session. I think that would be something, just to make sure we're in compliance, what we need to be in compliance with and that kind of thing. If that's okay with everybody, be okay with that.
Yeah, but we also need to, and I hear incentives.
Sure.
I mean, we need to, we need to have input on these incentives and what we're looking at versus just, I mean, not that you don't, you wouldn't have best...
Let me just throw this out there, if someone has a project that's going to provide possibly $4,500, $5,000 a year in property taxes, then we might want to give them an incentive to annex a property into the city.
Don't disagree.
Long term, we're going to reap the benefit many times over what it may or may not be.
Right. But we need to have something outlined versus, I mean, it sounds to me like you're asking the authorities to make, do that negotiation with them.
Absolutely.
And we got to be clear that the next one that comes up a month later or two months later and have another negotiation, which is different from, you know, without some policy or guidelines of what we're going to offer, it doesn't need to be piecemeal.
Well, you may want to consider putting a cap on the incentives, right? That might be something that the council would want to consider, rather than just give the city manager, which won't always be me, I assure you.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking more on, you know, of whether you, as we do with these enterprise zones, you know, 100%, you know, reduction the first year, and then 80%, and 60%, something that, some guideline that applies to everybody, not just this one, and the next time, it might be different for the other person.
Well, depending on the location, the incentives may be different from one location to another. There may be certain incentives available in this geographical area or this zoning area, and they may not be available in another zoning area or geographic area.
But I think what he's saying is we need to define what that is. For example, in the enterprise and opportunity zone, it was created to help with blighted areas. There was a very specific checklist of things, and then the boundary defined. I think what Jack's saying is, that's okay to say in this zone, you have this, and that zone, you have that, but what is our reason for having this incentive over here but not having it there? What is the benefit that, is that, am I correct in that?
And the same benefit within the zone, the same benefit, having a uniform, having a uniform policy within that zone. That's, yeah, so there's, yeah.
That may or may not be possible after you go to a legal policy.
Okay. And I'd like to hear, with our, our training session, the thoughts of our presenter at that, too, so...
If taxes, property taxes are not an incentive, then that's not good.
Based on...
Based on, you got to pay back the incentives somehow, though.
I'll get, okay, well, let's talk about that further.
Okay.
And we can, we can absolutely, any other comments regarding annexation? We can get into that in a little more detail and just...
The more the better.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
All right, at this time, we're going to close out our workshop and call to order our special call meeting. And the first item on the agenda for our special call meeting is a resolution for the 2016 budget revision, so we'll need a motion to approve or deny that.
So moved.
So move to approve?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion regarding these revisions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Our next item is renewal of the contract with Marvin and Jenkins for the annual auditing function.
So moved.
Jack, Jack and, it's the Jack and Johnny Show. Got it going on. So any discussion involving that contract? No discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Our next item is the ordinance providing for the additional six-month extension on crematories in the city of Tipton.
So moved.
Frank has made the motions or seconded.
Seconded.
Jack has seconded. Any discussion? Got it. Got to hit it, you do. Any discussion?
Yeah, yes, I mean, oh, no.
No, okay. At this point, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. And finally, the resolution providing for the amendment on Resolution Number 2015-82 for Tipton Magnolia Properties. Need a motion for that?
So moved.
Frank?
Second.
Second, Johnny? Excellent. Any discussion? There being no discussion, let's call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. All right, going, I think we are, that's completed our meeting, unless we have anything else you need to discuss for the good, there being no further business, we will call this John.